The council meeting of March 5th will come to order. Good evening. Would ask that all in attendance turn off or silence your devices and please stand to honor God and country. Father of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a worthy community. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen. And now the pledge to our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, there are forms available in the back of the room that can be turned into the clerk directly to my right. Our first order of business would ask that Mr. William Newkirk Jr. approach the podium. Mr. Newkirk, thank you for your service to our community. The certificate of recognition that we are going to be presenting to you this evening is in recognition of your outstanding service to the citizens of Temple Terrace for more than 10 years of devoted service to our community and to our municipal code enforcement board. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Uh, main thing I'd like to say is an honor for me to sit up there and all the people I've sat with over the years to be part of the community and to help give back a little bit for all of us to have a better life.
Very good. And for our community members in attendance, the code enforcement board spends countless hours making sure that our community remains safe and beautiful. And if you would join I and Councilmember Ross in thanking Mr. Newkirk. Next, if Dr. Dekeian Graham would approach the podium. We want to congratulate Dr. Graham on being named the Hillsborough County Teacher of the Year. Currently, yeah, that is a wow. Currently, Dr. Graham serves as the Director of Instrumental Studies at his alma mater, King High School. During his 10 years in the Hillsborough County Public Schools, his students have demonstrated determination, focus, and tenacity as they have earned the opportunity to perform at the prestigious Carnegie Hall. Dr. Graham's passion is to continue to positively impact the next generation of world changers. Dr. Graham, your mayor and council are delighted to honor you this evening with this recognition. It is a certificate of recognition presented to Dr. Dekeian Graham in recognition of being named Hillsborough County Teacher of the Year. Would you like to say or sing a few words, Dr. Graham?
I'm actually headed to choir rehearsal right now after this is over. It is just, it's an incredible honor for me, being a product of King High School and spending so many of my pivotal years in the Temple Terrace area and so many of my friends, because I actually lived in the Brandon area. And so I came over for IB for King initially, but it just became another home for me throughout those years. And obviously, being back for the last 10 years and being able to teach and serve, to continue to serve the community has just been an absolute incredible honor and I'm just blessed to be able to be a part of such a great community.
Very good. Well, Dr. Graham, you stand still and I am going to ask Councilman Schisler, who is our liaison to the school support committee, to come down with me as we make the presentation. And if Principal Elizabeth Kraft of Focus Academy will step to the podium for a state of the school presentation. And joining Principal Kraft this evening is Faith Von Middin and Lawanda Broadnecks, who will be speaking about the grant on transition tools that was awarded by our school support committee.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and just share a little bit about Focus. Ms. Faith Von Middin actually is no longer with us. She has moved on to grad school and is currently pursuing a graduate degree in drama therapy. So she was a blessing to have and we're very happy for her. But I do have Lawanda Broadnecks with us, who is our transition specialist. And then I brought two of my students. I have Elizabeth Eisenberg, who's in our transition program, and then Sam Acosta, who is in our high school program. So they're here with us this evening, too. If we could have the slide up on the screen, I would appreciate. All right, so getting started. Our current enrollment at Focus Academy is 112 students. This is our sixth year in existence. We started out with 26 kids, so 112 is pretty amazing. We have 72 kids in our high school program and then 40 students in our transition program. Just some school-wide news that we have going on currently. Right now, we have two of our alumni who are current employees with us. One works as a teacher's aide in the classroom and then one is working in the lunchroom, helping to serve the lunch program. And then we do have one of our students who graduated and aged out last year, Zachary Mueller, who you all know, comes and does volunteer work at our school every day. He runs our soundboard for our music class in the morning. So we're very excited to have three of our alumni as part of our, as part of our staff. We did start Special Olympics this last spring. We started with a volleyball team and then this fall, we had a flag football team. Both of those teams did make it to state games at Disney World and both won medals. And then this year, we also have a volleyball team again and we have enough students to make up two teams. So it's very exciting to be able to offer some of those extracurricular activities for our students. Currently, we do have a school-wide coding initiative happening. I don't know if you guys are familiar with code.org, but they provide free curriculum to educators to try to bring awareness for computer science education. And so they came out to our school and provided a full-day training for free for all of our teachers. And so now every Friday is Coding Day at Focus Academy and we're just really trying to bring awareness of coding skills and computer science to our students to try to see who has strengths in that and see what opportunities would be, we would have in that area. So there's all my teacher, I don't know if you guys can see, but there's. In our high school program, we did accept 31 new students in this school year. We have 18 graduating seniors and graduation is May 30th. So always happy to have anybody from the city of Temple Terrace come on out to our graduation. It's at 5:00 PM. In the winter performance that we had back in December, we had 58 of our high school students who participated and 16 of those students had never performed onstage before. So just giving our students amazing opportunities to show their strengths, you know, to the community is what we're all about. We do have a spring performance coming up. We're going to be featuring the Broadway musicals of Lion King and Shrek and that will be happening on May 4th. And you guys are, again, always welcome to come out and see that. And then for this past school year, our graduation rate was 10% better than the state and county rates for ESE students. So we're very excited about that and continuing to, you know, see our students graduate and move on with a, with a degree. In our transition program, this is just a list of the sites that we're currently at. We added new this year, the fire department, which the students love. They get to go help wash the fire trucks, which is really awesome opportunity for them. And, you know, we've just continued to love being able to see our students within the different offices within Temple Terrace and also at Five Star Pizza. We do have one of our students in transition who is being employed by Five Star Pizza and works 20 hours a week there. So we were able to incorporate that within our transition program. So he comes on campus a couple of days a week and then he's working as well, which is very exciting. And then we have nine students who are aging out this school year. So we have nine students who need something, you know, next for them. So, so, you know, always a hard day to, to see students leave. Some pictures of our kiddos. All right, so our school support grant, we did receive a school support grant for the 1718 school year, which was our, for our transition program. It was Tools for Success. It provided funding for work kits. So some of the items that were purchased with that grant were some cleaning towels and rags, cleaning products. We were able to purchase an industrial vacuum cleaner, some dusters and spray bottles. And Ms. Broadnecks wanted to just talk a little bit about some ways that that has been utilized within the transition program and some of the outcomes that we've seen with that.
So the grant provided an opportunity for our teachers to instruct on employability skills and to model and instruct on independent living skills. And so now that our students are, were able to purchase the, I mean, have those items in their possession, that they can work in the community, on campus and off campus, providing those activities of, oh, actually instruction of one-step task or two, multi-step instructions, task completion, and things of that nature. And so now they're, they're a little bit better at what they do and now they've become more employable and more independent. So kudos for you guys for providing us those opportunities to model, or for them to model and for us to instruct.
As part of that, you know, Tools, Toolkit for Success, we also had the school purchase the pickers and buckets so that the kids who go out to parks and rec parks to do park cleanup have the tools that they need to be successful in that and not having to, you know, bend over and, and pick up garbage with their hands. So that was a great thing. And then we also were able to get parent donations of tools so that when we have projects that come to us where we need to put together furniture, our students are able to do that. So it was, you know, it was a whole group initiative to provide those work kits for our students. So we definitely are very thankful for that and appreciate your part in that.
They gave us a big opportunity to show that the students can put together items we purchased from IKEA or, or online. And the students were putting those things together with the tools that we, that we were donated as well as, it was amazing to watch them put together desks. Elizabeth has a new desk that one of my students put together. And so as well as our secretary, she also got a new desk that our students put together.
I can't put together the items from IKEA.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty amazing to watch. Some of them, they can complete it, you know, the task from start to finish without any instruction. They're, they're just, they're just amazing.
Excellent.
So, yeah. This year, we were awarded a school support grant as well and it was for our music program. We were able to purchase some chimes for our students. And so those have been purchased and they're currently being used in the music class. And we are going to be featuring those in our spring performance. So here's, I don't know if, there's no sound. We had a little video there of the kids practicing with them. So it's been really cool to see them be able to pick up the skill set of, you know, of how chimes work and just, there's lots of really great things going to be happening. So come out to that performance in May. Some exciting news for us coming forward, we are going to be having a Focus Cafe that is anticipated to be opened on May, May of 2019 at the Temple Terrace Recreation Center. This is just an amazing opportunity for our students to continue growing and learning those employability skills and just open up amazing new opportunities for our students. So we definitely appreciate you guys thinking of us and continuing to partner with us, you know, in this, helping our students become members of our society. The Focus Cafe will be staffed with students from our transition program and then we'll have our, you know, our staff there who will also be overseeing that. And then tentative plans, we're going to start small and hope to grow, but coffee, soft drinks, snacks, and we're definitely working with Carl very closely. He allowed us to come out last week to look at the site and just kind of take some measurements and everybody at Focus is very, very excited about this new opportunity. So thank you so much for that. And then also, we're hoping in September that we're going to be able to start a program for our 22 and older students. It's going to be called Focus Forward and it's for uniquely able young adults 22 and beyond. It just extends that time way of transition. So we're going to continue to offer additional life skills training, independent living classes, job training, both on and off campus, and then the, that continued opportunity for social connection that is such a key part of our program at Focus. So, and then the hope is too, that our Focus Forwards participants will also be able to work at that Focus Cafe. So just some really amazing things happening at Focus Academy and we continue to have hope for a great relationship with Temple Terrace.
Thank you. We're so happy to have you at Temple Terrace.
Thank you. And is it too late for people who may be interested in attending the gala? Is it sold out?
I am not sure. Do we sell tickets available for the gala? Yes, we still do. So yes, this Saturday.
This Saturday, as I understand, is the gala for Focus Academy. And if there are members here this evening or members who are viewing on TV, if you can't make it to the gala, I believe the online auction has already commenced. And so there's a, there's a way to support this wonderful school in our community. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next, Principal Richard Zianti of Jennings Middle School will present a state of the school presentation and along with Principal this evening is Marcus Davis to discuss the Legos Grant.
Good evening. I bring you greetings on behalf of Richard Zianti, Principal of Jennings Middle School, home of the Jaguars. My name is Nakia Sturup and I serve in his absence to speak to everyone today. I am the Saks Chair, Subject Area Leader for Science and the Science Resource Teacher for the school. A little history about Jennings Middle School, we were named after Mr. Jinx Jennings, a resident of the Non-Asasa. He, in the 1950s, died, but along with his legacy and the work he conducted, he was a strong advocate for education in the Seftner, the Non-Asasa area. The current edifice of Jennings Middle School stands at 9325 Governor's Run Drive and we currently service approximately 830 middle school students and their families. Currently, the school grade is a C. As an achievement school and with a variety of resources in place, we are focusing on improving instruction through increasing lesson planning within teachers and classrooms and rigor within the classrooms. We want our students to be involved in a variety of activities. We have different partners for the school, such as the Temple Terrace Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, New Uptown Zeta, Allen Temple Church, various mentors from organizations, social emotional supports, and academic enrichment opportunities. All of these are put in place for the success of our students in school and in life. They have mentor groups for the girls and boys, art clubs, book clubs. They're using our greenhouse as an SSA review for students. And just as I stated, everything is meant for the students to not just apply what they're learning on a test, but also for them to have life skills moving forward. Different activities that teachers use within the classroom to involve their students is to conduct different station activities, such as in math or science, so that students can apply real-world scenarios. That we've held STEM expos at the school site. Our ELA department has conducted literacy fairs. We have a thriving ASD unit that holds their own cafe. So our autistic students and students with other special needs, they're able to practice the specific skills they have. Here with me is Marcus Davis. He's a sixth-grade science teacher who has continued with sponsoring a Lego STEM club for the school and for the students with the assistance of the Temple Terrace funding. Marcus?
Well, good afternoon. Forgive me, I'm a little bit nervous. Goodness. All right, so, so, thank you so much. So, last year during the 2017, 2018, I did hold a STEM club, also known as the Lego Club. During, you know, kids' free time, they would come to me. My focus was, was, I'm sorry, was on the, on gifted children because we have such a low gifted population. But then I kind of like extended it out. So I did include children from the ASD unit as well as kids in intensive classes that, to help, let's say broaden their, you know, their, the idea, their focus and so forth. Because I wanted to bring science to life for them. So the idea actually came from all the new construction going on in the Temple Terrace area as well as in the Seftner area. And, and we do, in science, focus on certain benchmarks dealing with, you know, earth as far as like weathering erosion, human impact, weather and climate. So like, it's a, you know, let me see, how about, you know, we, we use Legos to actually bring things to life for them. So of course, I was thinking about like construction, thinking, thinking about, okay, if you build that, if, you know, if you build a house, where would you place your house at? Then of course, how would, how would you sustain that house? What about ways to preserve that house and so forth? And, and so on. So I did challenge those students, even the ASD students, to come up with ways to help preserve the land. And it just grew bigger. So they end up building their own, their own little town. They even named it. Thank you to the funding that you all, you know, gave me. So forgive me. So this is one of the, the models right here, I'm sorry, that was built by one of our students. And one of the best things that, that came from it, even with children with some behavior issues, it actually helps aside the behavior issues because it gave them something to focus on, something to achieve. And, and we, you know, of course, it was a great incentive for them, whereas if they knew that if they were having a bad day, they were like, oh, I can't go to Lego Club. So they knew just to put their best foot forward. So it served not only just in science, but it also served as an incentive for them as well. So it was a phenomenal grant, which we're also using today as, you know, continuing that same model as we did from last year. So, and we did see great growth in, in benchmarks in our testing because of that. So thank you.
Thank you very much for being with us this evening. Next, we'd call Kim Straub and Nicole Sauer of Temple Terrace Arts Council for information to share on Art and Blanc.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Hi.
I'm delighted to introduce Nicole Sauer, who is a newer member of the Arts Council. And let me just say, this could be a disaster because I forgot my glasses tonight.
But I'm going to do my best.
I also see that we have Sherri Donahue, President of the Arts Council, and James Chambers, who's first Vice President of the Arts Council, dressed for the evening's topic, which is Art and Blanc. Would you like to stand up so everyone can see?
Oh, yes. No.
Ooh.
Just don't tell anyone in my family that I'm dressed in white before Memorial Day.
We are here to extend an invitation to join in a celebration of the arts on April 13th from 7:00 to 10:00 PM at beautiful Woodmont Park. This wildly successful fundraiser, Art and Blanc, is now in its seventh year and it has continued to retain supporters as well as gain many newcomers.
It's my first year. I'm very excited. I get to wear my new outfit.
Well, it is a lovely outfit, but no, actually guests are required to dress in white. Anything from brilliant to khaki with accents of gold or silver, that's fine, too. And even sometimes you can wear a hat if you choose to.
Okay, I'll go shopping. Can I wear these? Can I wear these shoes?
No, 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 no.
They're clean.
But the feet themselves are a work of art.
Oh.
I mean, they are destined to be bound and wrapped in something that covers the toes and allows you to glide across the grass. This is an outdoor event.
Oh.
And the band is going to have you up dancing on your toes. And guess what? They're going to knock your socks off.
Do I have to wear socks? No. Yes? No?
I just don't know what to say about that. Oh, mon dieu, is what I think I will say.
Okay. Oh, I have harmonica. Can I play with the band? I'm very good. I'm horrified.
Actually, this band is so amazing and they are already full to the hilt and I don't think they're going to have room to squeeze you in this time.
Okay, I'll dance.
They're five-star. This band is five-star and they have actually been able to play with Sir Paul McCartney.
That sounds amazing.
Yes, and their name is Phase Five.
Well, what else is going on?
Oh, well, lots of things, but there's going to be an art raffle. And yes, there's going to be a collection of paintings, pottery tickets, to-art adventures, photographs, even an unplanned artist who will capture the je ne sais quoi of the evening on canvas.
That sounds wonderful. Where do I get my raffle tickets?
Well, the tickets, yeah. Well, you could get those tickets from me.
Oh, good.
Or anyone who's on the Arts Council.
Oh, me.
You could sell them to yourself.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah. And you can buy them at Eventbrite.com.
Eventbrite.com. Eventbrite.com.
And you also can purchase them the night of the event. You can purchase them for yourself, you can buy them for your friends, you can buy them for your friends' friends. I mean, they're only $5.
That's not bad. Well, what about my tables? Can they purchase? If a table comes in, can they purchase a raffle ticket?
We would be delighted for a table to purchase. Eight, if you purchase a table of eight, you would get four tickets for free. If you purchase a table of 10, you get five art raffle tickets. And the thing is, though, you only have until March 17th for this special offer.
Saint Patrick's Day.
That's right.
Saint Patrick's Day. Well, everything sounds wonderful. Who is catering?
Huh? Okay, well. The Temple Terrace. Country club will be offering a delicious choice of several items which can be delivered directly to your table or you can collect your table buddies and talk everyone into bringing their favorite, favorite menu item and just do a special kind of buffet of sorts. Or, or you could spend hours in the kitchen shaving, cutting, braising, baking, doing all that stuff and make your own unique feast.
I'll bring a granola bar and a Gatorade. Is that good?
Yeah, some people bring their own food, yeah.
Are we allowed to bring our own drinks?
Yes, yes.
I've heard about this.
Yes, you can bring your own liquid refreshments and you must bring vessels to hold them. Put in half ice, bring your stirs, bring your straws, bring anything that you might need for that. Also, there will be a wine pool.
Oh, wine pool. Do I bring cash or credit for that? Do I bring cash or credit for that?
Whatever you wish, or both. There's a lot going on.
That sounds like a lot's going on. Where do I sign up?
Well, that would be Eventbrite.
Eventbrite.com.
Exactly.
Yes.
And then search for Art en Blanc 2019 and you'll find all the information you need, ways to get tickets, everything.
Well, everything sounds amazing. And my, um, let me do a recap. We got wear white, including my dancing shoes, sign up at Eventbrite.com, bring cash or credit to purchase raffle tickets for fine art prizes and a wine pool. And I can bring my own food or I can order from the country club. Am I missing anything?
Good. You're good. I neglected to mention that there is a very fierce yet somehow friendly competition for the rather monstrous trophy and a lot of public applause for the person who wins best table scape.
Tablescaping. What is that?
Well, the Arts Council furnishes a table, tablecloth, white chairs.
Blanc.
Yeah, en blanc. And it's up to you to use white. Again, you can use silver or gold accents. And just explore your inner artist to create a work of art whose limits are only the stars in the sky.
Well, everything sounds amazing and I do hope to see you all at Woodmont Park for this year's Art en Blanc.
Now let's go get your outfit.
Yes. Shopping. Thank you. Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
See you in April.
Next, if Staff Sergeant Cameron Spencer of the U.S. Air Force Recruiting Service would come to the podium and also if our Parks and Recreation staff would join him.
So, excuse me. Thank you to the mayor and the members of the city council for letting me come here this evening. Whenever I find a chance to brag about anyone, I want to take it. And that's why I've come here to do today for Temple Terrace Family Records Center. Again, my name is Staff Sergeant Spencer. I'm a special warfare recruiter for Florida. Around three of us currently right now. And the area I cover is Clearwater all the way down to Miami, pretty much. And we're based here in the Tampa, uh, in the Tampa area. For you guys who don't know what special warfare is, it's not a regular Air Force recruiter that you see in the high schools and all the time. This is the Air Force's version of Navy SEALs and Green Berets. So men and women who like a tough job and then want to go even further and jumping out of planes and that type of, type of, type of things. So not an easy thing to find. That's why we have such huge areas. I arrived here in December of last year. Technical Sergeant Reese was covering this area prior. And I was in upstate New York for around three and a half years before I got news I was coming to Tampa. In fact, it was 18 degrees the Friday I left New York and 78 degrees three days later when I arrived here. So needless to say, I fell in love almost immediately with this area. But I think about a week later, we were meeting up, having a kind of turnover between us two, Sergeant Reese and I. And I'm already all smiles because that's what the sun does to you. But he was telling me about the location where he trains and evaluates our future men and women who want to be special warfare for this country. And he was telling me, hey, we used to use this facility, but we went through this and we, we had this problem with funding and, and location and times and problems with management. And it was a story that I was very clear, uh, familiar with and the location that I was before in New York and other places I've recruited in Massachusetts and New York City. We have a, an issue with recruiting right now. It's not, it's not finding people, but it's more of what we call in the military as legacy families. You know, what we found is over the past decade or so, probably two decades at this point, the broader military service has been on the same families. A lot of us, we grew up in generations where we all knew had a father, an uncle, an aunt who served. And through the knowledge of meeting those people, we served and so on and so forth. But it's gotten to the point where that weight, you know, it can't be held on those same families, you know, here in America. So one of the things we focused on a lot here in recruiting is awareness. You know, awareness that even though I recruit for it, not everyone in the military is jumping out of planes and mountain climbing, you know? There's lots of career fields, lots of trades, lots of educational opportunities that the Air Force has available to people. And that's the battle that we fight now. So when we arrive in cities like this, we're not, we're not stationed at military bases as recruiters. It's in metropolitan areas. The first thing we do, we call it city by city. It's, we need to get ingrained in the community. So the community leaders like yourself, the community members like everyone here knows we're here, not just looking for a certain type of person, you know? We're looking for, for people who are into STEM. We're looking for cooks. We're looking for people, we're just looking for a way to pay for education and we're looking for people who are just here to serve. And when I heard about how open Temple Terrace Family Records Center was to Sergeant Reese, I said, I don't know if you know how rare that is, because this was his first location he had started recruiting. And, you know, they gave me a tour, welcomed me with very open arms. Our coach, who covers all of Florida, just kept going when he arrived here. He's like, make sure you don't mess up that relationship with them because I really like them. I really like what they've done for us and the support they've had for us. So before Sergeant Reese left, we tried to put this in order, but this is the U.S. government and everything takes a lot of time. So I think it arrived about two weeks ago. But this is an award for you guys recognizing your commitment and dedication to helping us find, sculpt, and give the tools available to the men and women who decide that this is the future they want. So thank you very much for, for that. And thank you to the city for everything you've done to keep them going. And hopefully, we can keep that going as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I almost escaped.
Very nice. Thank you. Thank you, Staff Sergeant Spencer, and thank you Carl and the Leisure Services team for all you do to, to create those strong partnerships. Item 3A, Council would request a motion to confirm the appointment of Councilmember Gil Schisler as the Council Liaison to the Strategic Advisory Committee for the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club. Is there a motion?
There is. I move to approve the mayor's appointment of Councilmember Schisler to the Strategic Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you and thank you for your willingness to serve in that capacity, Councilman Schisler. Next, if the minutes of the February 19, 2019 city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Move for adoption.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you. Minutes stand approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comments on items not on the agenda, the city manager and directors in attendance do make note of these items and will be reaching back to our residents. We have one form this evening. Sam Estes. And company.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Estes. I'm the president of the Mayor Youth Leadership Council and we are here as a group just to talk about certain things. I'm going to pass along to my cohorts and then come around back to the mic.
Hi, my name is Caleb Colton and we all stand here and representative of the Temple Terrace Mayor's Youth Leadership Council. And what we've been doing, we've decided to take on a project to start a library for the Boys and Girls Club. And so we would just like to show how thankful we are for all of the people in the community who have decided to help and donate all these books and also to all the organizations. And there's been just a great abundance of so many books and all the support that the community has showed. So we're just extremely thankful. And we're also thankful for the support of our amazing city council, all of you. So thank you for all of that.
So essentially what we're doing with all these donations is we are, um, the Boys and Girls Club that is actually going to be opening later this month. We are collecting all the generous donations of books so that we as a group can construct a bookshelf for them, decorate it, all that. And then we're gonna collect all these books and put them on the bookshelf so as to provide a good resource of a sort of mini library for the new Boys and Girls Club that's up and coming.
This is of course so important, especially to young children that the Boys and Girls Club targets because education will help build a strong foundation for them, to encourage them to be creative, curious, and be successful leaders for our community. And we are so excited to be able to help and provide this opportunity, especially for our city.
So on behalf of the entire youth council, all 13 of us, we would like to thank our lovely council and our lovely city for donating such amazing books to such an amazing cause. With only a minute to spare, I would like to talk about, well, I would like to talk about our council now. Our council has been so fortunate enough to work in the city and for the city, just being kind of a voice for the youth. The, we are the inaugural class of our youth council and we are just so beyond blessed for the leadership tools and things that we have been equipped over the past year. And I think I could speak on behalf of us that this past year has already gone by so fast. And that being said, it is now currently application time. So I am just here advocating for our entire council and saying that we urge those who are going to be in high school next year, so that can mean anywhere between an upcoming freshman to an upcoming senior. There is an application online for you to fill out. Through that, you'll be able to just get a couple references and an application and a quick essay done. And we would love for you to come and join the ranks of all of us here in the city and just be able to work with the city and for the city in order of bettering it, just as we've been able to already so far in a little bit of time that we've been able to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing, President Estes. I want to thank you all for being here this evening and this has been such an exceptional group to work with. Just a quick point, point of privilege, you all have exceeded every expectation and it is time to apply. If you go to the city website, there is a link at the top for Mayor's Youth Leadership Council where you'll be able to fill out the application. A special shout out and congratulations, our president of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, who is president by a vote of his peers, was just last week awarded the Chick-fil-A Scholarship. And I know all of our students are racking up scholarships and just a wonderful future. I think this evening we have two seniors with us, right? Both Yeham and Sam are seniors who will be leaving, so high school students, we are looking for some replacements. And then we have some continuing students who will be filling those leadership roles next year. Thank you all for being here this evening. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Danny Kunak. You will remember me from previous points I tried to share with the council and with the audience. Last time I spoke here was on January 5th. In the meantime, there have been some recurring comments which just prompted me to share with you some constructive thoughts here as an expert witness in human factors. Human factors is a field that deals with preventing bad things from happening, undeserved things from happening, and to that extent, making life more livable, productive, and enjoyable. In essence, the field responds to the Murphy's Law of if everything or if anything can go wrong, it will go wrong. And since the city manager and some of the council members pointed out here repeatedly that certain comments and criticism were out of order, I think it would be beneficial to remember some of the principles of human factors engineering to benefit from them in the future and therefore avoid situations which just take us, and I include myself into it, nowhere. The point here is to be constructive, creative, and no matter who has to say what, there's always something to learn because nobody knows everything. So human factors actually starts with making things impossible. That's the ideal. Because nothing coming from a human hands can ever be perfect. Only God can make perfect things. Then there are other remedies and steps that need to be followed in order to create situations and environments where people interact with their elements in their environment, be it equipment, places, machinery, situations of physical or psycho, social nature, so that really nothing undesirable or bad can happen. That saves time, energy, money, and things of that nature. So number one principle is, as I said, make things impossible happen. That will not happen, but you need to match the threat or hazard with the remedies and preventive measures. In case of mosquitoes attacking your home and trying to invade and, and bite you, you put screens in the window rather than go on eBay and buy some electronic gadget and then batteries go out and you, you got it, okay? So you match physical threats and hazards with physical protection. Because again, nothing is perfect. There are other steps to compensate and add on to the physical nature. And the reason that people in the past were yelling barbarians are at the gate was because they had a gate. And gates don't exist without a wall, which is why we, at least some people in the United States are in favor of building a wall. Well, how can you yell without a wall? Caravans are at the gate or at the wall. You cannot do that. So you have to have something physical to stop a physical move of certain elements. Pardon me for saying elements. I don't mean to say it in a negative way, but something that intrudes or invades is of physical nature. Therefore, there has to be, to start with something of physical nature to, to oppose it. And then there are other steps to add on to it. And the weakest one, and this is essentially what's been happening here, the weakest and least effective one is words. Warning, signals, advice, no trespassing, don't enter, it's radioactive here. Nothing like this will stop anybody from doing some foolish things. Burglar bars will stop the invader. Trespassing signs will not. So with that in mind, I would like to suggest that perhaps at your discretion in the future, if you want to prevent somebody from coming here and some members correctly and politically dash altruistically suggest that everybody has his or her rights to speak here, that's okay. But engineering as a design discipline doesn't have any emotions, doesn't have any political allegiance, doesn't have any, anything of that soft scientific nature. It is based on hardcore principles derived from science and from empirical studies and put in place. So with that in mind, I would like to suggest that perhaps in the future, the council may protect itself and, and gain from it by saying enough is enough and this is what we put in place and then automatically let the system terminate the invasion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kunak. Next, item 8A, a reso, oops, sorry. Item 8A, a resolution authorizing a piggyback agreement for a new wide sidewalk construction. Vinnie Carraza, city engineer, will explain. Mr. Carraza.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. So this is a resolution tonight is to piggyback on the city of Northport's 2018-64 concrete flatwork contract with Gillium Construction LLC in order to construct the new sidewalks in the 52nd Street Serena Drive neighborhood. But first, I'd like to just share with you a little background on what's going on with this project. Okay, so to paraphrase the sentence, the Community Development Block Grant is a program that provides federal funds to communities to improve the lives that provides federal funds to communities to improve the lives of low-to-moderate income citizens. Okay? So, on behalf of HUD, Hillsborough County allocates, administers and allocates a yearly allotment to the City of Temple Terrace, and that's to improve the lives that directly benefit our CDBG-eligible areas. And here's a map of the city with the census tract datas. The locations here are pretty much west of 56th Street that are eligible for CDBG, and also we have two locations in the eastern part of our city. The project that we're looking at tonight is the Serena Neighborhood, 52nd Street. Okay? History of the CDBG is, at the July 17th City Council meeting, asphalt paving systems was authorized to piggyback on the Polk County contract to resurface 52nd Serena Drive Neighborhood. It's the red marks on the map on the presentation. Okay? Here's some pictures of what happened last year. They did a pretty good job repaving the streets. However, the sidewalk portion was not completed. And at the January 15, 2019 City Council meeting, there was an amendment modifying the agreement with Hillsborough County that reinstated the $100,000 that were used, that were not used from the Boys and Girls Club. So essentially, we have more money, $168,558 for sidewalks. We will attempt to provide sidewalks for the entire neighborhood, but it may not be possible, and so we prioritize it. So, on this map here, the green lines is a first priority. We definitely can't complete those sidewalks. The second one is the purple lines, which we may or may not get to, and also the red lines. So, we'll try to get all the sidewalks. So, the plan is similar to how we piggyback on the Polk County contract with asphalt paving for resurfacing. We'd like to piggyback on the City of Northport's contract to do the sidewalks. So, I stand for questions. Can the city council?
And prior to questions, Mr. Cross, I'd ask, are there members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, council questions. Councilman Schisler, and then we'll go to the councilman.
Oh, I apologize. Councilman Donahue.
That's okay. On the map you showed, between Holland, just south of Holland, the map is gone, so I'm going by memory.
Oh, okay.
The squiggly line, is that that park?
I don't have it.
Oh, thank you. Is that the Serena, between Holland and Serena?
I'm going to bring it back for you.
That's okay. Is that the park?
It is.
Okay, so, I guess my question is, is it more important to do the park than a, than a street sidewalk?
That's a good question. Sidewalks are not mandated to go straight, so it's a meandering use of that area. This is sort of to leverage the pathway from Serena up 52nd and to sort of use a portion of that sidewalk to improve the walkway in that park area. If you've been out there, it's a dirt path.
Right.
And we'd like to give some asphalt, or, I'm sorry, some concrete pathway in there.
The reason I was asking is that I know that park cannot be utilized without a sidewalk, so I wanted to make sure that there was a good reason to do that as opposed to doing it on a straight street. So, thank you. Great answer.
It is a creative way of giving the sidewalks some hard pavement.
Councilman Schisler.
You said it was what, a goat path?
Dirt path.
I know. I learned a new word. Goat path is a no-go. Number two.
Yes.
First of all, this is a very, I'm sorry, it's a very, very good application of those monies that were released. I'm glad to see that we're utilizing the opportunities when they arise and shuffle the money, use it where it's demonstrable and everybody can see what's going on. I do have a question regarding piggyback contracts. When we have a piggyback, when we piggyback onto another contract, does that restrict any recourse that the city might have in case that there's an issue with the vendor that we're using? Does that, due to the way the original contract might be structured, does that, you know, in a county venue for redress, like any issues we brought up in, this is Northport, which is what, Sarasota or Lee County? Or would we have to go there, or would it, it would shift to Hillsborough County if we had to go back against the vendor for anything, any issues? That's probably a pain.
I'll call on city attorney Shashawn.
Almost the city manager knows the answer.
I'd have to, I'd have to read the particular contract to see what the language is and whether there's a restriction on what the venue would be for any type of litigation. If there isn't any restriction, then we would be part of the contract just as the original city or government entity that we're piggybacking with would be in. However, I'm assuming that, I'm just assuming that there was an original contract with this construction company that would spell that out.
So, if, and this is, we do a lot of piggyback contracts, so if we have, if we piggyback with this Northport contract, and on their short county that is, is that Manassas, Sarasota? I'm not really even sure, but if we have an issue, do we have to go to that jurisdiction to, to seek redress, or do we, can we do it in Hillsborough County?
If it is, if it is identified in the contract, then we would have to do that.
Okay.
And typically, that is not addressed in a contract specifically. If you're under a contract, the conditions, while we adopt that piggyback contract, we're obligated to follow those restrictions that are in the contract.
Regardless of what it is. Okay, all right, just curious, just curious.
Any other questions, Councilman Ross?
Just a quick clarification for the public. I think I know the answer to this, but I want everybody else to, these are new sidewalks, not replacement of existing sidewalks, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion authorizing a piggyback agreement for new sidewalk construction?
I'm going to approve the resolution authorizing a piggyback agreement for a new sidewalk construction.
Thank you, Councilwoman Donahue.
Second.
Do we have a, we have a motion in a second? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Oppose, the nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a resolution awarding the contract for construction services to replace force main D to Akipa Construction LLC. Troy Tinch, Public Works Utilities Director, will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council. I'm becoming quite a regular up here. Not necessarily a bad thing, because I'm usually asking for projects and design. So, I'm here tonight to seek approval to award the construction of force main D. As you're aware, over the past several months, I've brought several projects forward for design. This is the complementary to that, and I'm very happy to say that when, over the next coming months, you're going to see me up here more often asking for approval for design of these projects that we've been working on so diligently, and I'm very pleased with how things are moving within the city. So, this is our first, hopefully, of many as we move through this fiscal cycle, as well as we move into the next fiscal cycle. The project itself is going to involve the replacement of an existing four-inch horse main. It's ductile iron. We'll be replacing that with a six-inch HDPE or PVC pipe. I briefly discussed some of the benefits of utilizing that material in a previous presentation about force mains, so it would be advantageous for us to use that versus the metal, plus it will give us some additional capacity. The contract itself was advertised for 45 days. At the end of that 45-day period, we received six sealed bids. Those bids ranged in price from $185,000 upwards of $406,000. We did our due diligence on our end and determined that Akipa Construction LLC was the lowest responsible bidder for that particular project. They came in with a bid of $185,806.78. So, it is also important to note that this project is funded under our CIP program, and we have the funds available and ready to go this fiscal cycle to begin this work effort. So, that said, staff recommends the city council award a construction of force main D to Akipa Construction LLC in the amount of $186,000, or $806,78. Funding for this construction effort has been budgeted in the Water and Sewer Utility Fund with an account number 430-193-535.63-34. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. And prior to council questions, I'd ask, are there any members of the public who would like to address council on this issue? Seeing none, council questions. Mr. Stevenson.
Madam Mayor, I just need to clarify the appropriation code for that. Would you read that again, please?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're missing, we're missing a digit in your code. Just for the, for the clarification, it's 430-1931-535.63-34.
My apologies. It's actually in my notes, and I overlooked it.
Thank you, Mr.
That's why he's the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Council questions? If there are no questions, if acceptable, would entertain a motion awarding the contract for construction services to replace force main D to Akipa Construction LLC. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution as presented.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Oppose, the nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, a second public hearing and reading to adopt ordinance 1472 approving the voluntary annexation of 7118 East Fowler Avenue. The hearing is now open. Planner Andrea College will provide a brief explanation.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, I'm presenting the second public hearing and reading for the annexation number 1806, the voluntary annexation for the property located at 7118 Fowler Avenue. The owner is Halaf Mazur, and the applicant is Nick Refray. The request is to annex a parcel that is .58 acres. The proposed future land use will be commercial general. The zoning is also commercial general. The assessed value is $286,337, 335. Almost had to have the city manager correct me, too. The ad valorem value is $5,306.76, and staff recommends council approve ordinance number 1472 for voluntary annexation of 7118 East Fowler Avenue, annexation number 1806. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. College. And ahead of council questions, are there any members of the public wishing to address council on this issue? Seeing none, council questions? If there are no questions, would ask the clerk to please read ordinance 1472.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of one parcel of certain real property totaling 0.58 plus-minus acres lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County and located north of Fowler Avenue, east of North Drive, and west of River Hills Drive, with an address of 7118 East Fowler Avenue, legally described in Exhibit A attached here to and made apart hereof, redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include annexed area, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Our public hearing is closed, and would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1472, annex number 18-06.
Move to adopt ordinance 1472, approving the voluntary annexation.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Oppose, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, second public hearing and reading to adopt ordinance 1473 approving the voluntary annexation of 8901 Mason Drive, annex number 18-07. The public hearing is now open. Planner Andrea College will provide a brief explanation.
Thank you. I'm reading the second public hearing and reading for annexation 1807, voluntary annexation of the property located at 8901 Mason Drive. Owner is Henry Vickery, VC Properties LLC. The request is to annex one parcel, about 2.21 acres. The proposed future land use is industrial. The zoning is light industrial. The assessed value is $257,699. The ad valorem value is $4,776.4. Staff recommends council approve ordinance 1473 for voluntary annexation of 8901 Mason Drive, annexation number 1807.
Are there members of the public that would like to address council? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Council member questions? Seeing no questions, if the clerk would please read title of the ordinance 1473.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of one parcel of certain real property totaling 2.21 plus-minus acres lying within the unincorporated area of Hillsborough County and located on the southeast corner of Professional Place in Mason Drive, with an address of 8901 Mason Drive, legally described in Exhibit A, attached here to and made apart hereof, redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed area, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1473, annex number 18-07. We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Oppose, the nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a second public hearing and reading to adopt ordinance 1474 to vacate 12216 The Wood Duck Place easement is now open. City engineer Vinnie Carraza will provide a brief explanation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. So, this is the second reading of the ordinance to vacate, here we go, on the screen here, a 7.5-feet easement behind 12216 Wood Duck Place. That's owned by Mr. Stefan and Rupa Carpenter, who's in the audience here. This first public hearing and presentation was done at the last city council meeting, and this is a second reading of the ordinance. So, staff recommends that city council adopt the ordinance on the second reading of the vacating of the utility easement at 12216 Wood Duck Place.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Are there members of the public that would like to comment? Seeing none, questions, council? Councilman Schisler.
Yes. Does this easement, doesn't this easement run across the back of all the houses in that area?
Yes, sir.
Why aren't we just vacating all of them? It's, it's...
A very good question, and Mr. Carpenter went through a very rigorous process to try to get his HOA to vacate the entire place. However, you do have to do a lot of surveying, and the HOAs didn't want to spend the money, so Mr. Carpenter went ahead and paid the survey due to his portion.
Okay, okay.
There'd be about, or call about $30,000 to survey the entire, as opposed to my property.
Makes a difference. Thank you.
Good answer. The public hearing is now closed. If the clerk would please read the title of ordinance 1474.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the vacation of an approximately seven-and-one-half-foot utility easement behind the property having a street address of 12216 Wood Duck Place and located in a portion of Section 11 Township 28, South Range 19, East Hillsborough County, providing for conditions of vacation, providing for recidation, providing for an effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1474.
I'm going to approve the adoption of ordinance 1474 to vacate 12216 Wood Duck Place Utility Easement.
Thank you, Councilwoman Donahue. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Oppose, the nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a first reading of an ordinance providing for registration, maintenance, and security of abandonment properties. City Code Compliance Director, Mr. Broney, will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, city managers, the attorney, Tom Broney, Code Compliance Director. For many years now, one of my biggest challenges as a code inspector has been dealing with foreclosure of properties, especially when there has been unauthorized people living inside. In many cases, when property is in transition between the owner and the vacant property owner and the lender, it has been very difficult to get the squatter out of the property. For the last few years, code staff has seen many fraudulent leases agreements and also having difficulties in getting squatters removed from the structure. It is often quite challenging to get back, get to the bank or the lender to cut off the utilities or even process an eviction. It has almost been almost impossible and sometimes very time-consuming. This registration of abandoned properties ensures communication between the bank, the property owner, and the city staff with respect to any code violations that are presently at the property. This new ordinance... that are presently at the property. This new ordinance was modeled off of the Hillsborough County and West Palm Beach ordinance that will give our code staff and the Temple Terrace Police Department another tool to use to protect the health, safety, and the welfare of our citizens. The city staff will stand by for any questioning.
And prior to questions, Mr. Barone, I would ask, city attorney Shoshawn, if you would just give us a brief review of, you sent us this afternoon some late red line changes that I think they were in response to some questions that came from Councilman Ross. If you would just, just do a quick review on the red line items we received this
Did you want me to go through each one separately or just tell you generally what the purpose of the changes were?
I think general, and then if council has any specific questions, we can go from there. Thank you.
Okay. We'll start with the first one. It, it seemed that a concern was, is that in subsection B on the very first page, that it was having the city initially, the way it was written, it was having the city council declare that all abandoned properties are public nuisances. That seemed to be a little bit broad and condemning, if you will. So, I had just changed that to say that they may become a public nuisance because they, obviously, they're, they're not going to be a nuisance unless there are code violations existing on the property that are not being addressed. So, it was just to ease that, that up a little bit. As far as the others, I had added a few things to the different definitions that were listed for the purpose of making the terminology that's used throughout the ordinance a little clearer for, for citizens to understand it better and even more importantly, for the people that this is being directed toward, the people that must comply with the ordinance being those in charge of, those who own properties that may become abandoned or vacant. I had added in a section called Evidence of Vacancy, and as Mr. Barone stated, this was modeled after an ordinance that's already been in use by Hillsborough County and also by the city of West Palm Beach, and this came right out of, I believe, I think I used the city of West Palm Beach's ordinance so that it's a little clearer when you're trying to determine whether something is vacant. It gives some guidance as to the factors you can look at, and that also helps us should anything like this be challenged in court. We can point to these specific things to the judge and Mr. Barone or one of our code enforcement officers who would be the, the witness would be able to say, yes, I saw these things there and that's why I took an action. In trying to, with this, we're trying to put as much responsibility as we can on whoever may be in charge of property. So, I had added at the, I think we're on page three, at the top of page three, it's a subsection one, just to make, just to kind of put the onus on one or two more people, which would be not just the owner, but their authorized agent, and if we have some, a place that is a leased premises, to say that the legal holder of the lease or his or her representative could be held responsible. So, it's just giving us another, just another person, another body to look to. Obviously, the definition of vacant property is extremely important considering this is what we're dealing with in this ordinance. So, I expanded on the definition of vacant property, and again, it follows and tracks the city of West Palm Beach's ordinance. I want to mention, I'll mention here, I did have the pleasure of speaking with a code enforcement officer from the city of West Palm Beach today about how their ordinance is working and get a few tips, you know, that he may have to offer. And I also spoke with one of the assistant county attorneys for Hillsborough County, and both of them were very encouraging and said that this has been, their ordinances have been working great for them. So, I'll, I can let you know that. I also did a little research today and discovered that there are dozens of cities within the state of Florida that already have an ordinance similar to this, and close to us would be Pasco County has one, the city of Pinellas Park has one, the city of St. Pete Beach, city of St. Petersburg, city of Newport Ritchie, and Pinellas County. So, all of them are operating with a similar ordinance and seeking registrations of abandoned and vacant property. Going back to my additions, I had added a subsection J into 8-171, telling a property owner what the consequences of failing to register your property and any, to me, in any type of a ordinance or a law where you're, where you can impose a penalty or you've got enforcement, it's important to let them know what the consequences of a failure to abide are. I just felt that it would make our ordinance stand up better if challenged. And according to the two entities that I did talk today, they said that when they first implemented it, they were anticipating that there would be a room full of lenders complaining about this, but they said it hasn't happened and they've, banks and different entities are complying and are registering the properties, so.
Thank you, Ms. Shoshawn. I would ask, are there any members of the public that would like to address council on this issue? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium. Yes,
So, with the caveat that this is not my bailiwick at all, but I was curious about adverse possession and whether there's a conflict between adverse possession and any of the trespasser issues in here, having not read the actual language. But adverse possession statute allows, or at least contemplates the possibility of somebody else moving in and occupying it for a certain period of time. And I don't have any dog in this fight, but I just didn't know if anybody had actually challenged it on that grounds, if there's any potential conflict that you knew of.
I don't, I'm not aware of that.
And if you would state your name for the record, sir.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I'm Stefan Carpenter. I'm the guy of 12216 Wood Duck Place.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council on this issue? Seeing none, council questions? Councilman Donahue, Councilman Schisler.
Okay. If you don't mind, there was a home on the golf course, beautifully maintained by the bank. I know you remember which one it is.
418 Mission Hills?
No, this is on the golf course over the south side.
505 Brentwood?
Yes, beautifully maintained. Someone moved in. The former owners drove by and saw that somebody was living in their former house. The bank had been maintaining it. Is the, so now?
There's a new owner there now.
Right, but at the time, it was difficult to get the squatters out.
Yes.
So, is the, the bank is considered the owner here in this section under owner, and if they're controlling a property of, whether it's not controlled, not maintained, whatever, they have to register?
Yes.
Right, okay. So, that, then we would know that no one is living there.
That's correct.
And they could not get water because these folks were able to get water and electric and what have you.
Yes, by a fraudulent means that they had.
Exactly. So, carrying forward, if they did, if they didn't comply, I see in J that it says failed, blah, 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 but what's the penalty?
Maybe Pam can explain.
If they fail to comply with our ordinance, then they would be cited by code enforcement just as any other ordinance violation would be. And since this has to do with property maintenance, I believe Mr. Barone's department would be issuing a citation to them.
Okay. Because in this case, they came to us, they provided false documents, but we would have a record of that home being registered as vacant. So, there'd be a question immediately raised.
Yes.
Okay. So, as long as, I, I'm still not sure what that penalty would be. I guess we'll write that, is that going to be written at another time?
No, it would, it would be code enforcement's.
We would, we would take them to the code board.
Okay.
I do want to add one thing, though. I didn't want to be misleading in what I said about that there were these other two, Hillsborough County and West Palm Beach. They do not have in their ordinance the section on trespass affidavit. That is not part of theirs. So, they were not, you know, commenting on that part or endorsing it. I did mention that to them, and the response back from both is, gee, that's a good idea. So.
They'll be piggybacking.
So, I, I just didn't want to say that those entities had declared that that was working for them at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do, I like the ordinance. I think it's great. I think it's, it's something that we really need. But I got a couple, I got just four quick questions. Number one, how many properties in the city would be affected by this as we speak? You may not know the answer, but I mean...
Well, Pam found out that number today, and she wrote it down.
How many? Ten, 100?
It was an estimate that was given to me through checking a database, not by me, but I was talking to somebody else who's kind of in this business. They, their database tells them that in the last two years, our area had a foreclosure filing of 137 verifiable defaults, and their estimate for us is that we should be registering a minimum of 150 properties.
Okay. And then how, how will the city go about notifying the lenders in, in general that they have to, they have to register? That this is going to be a requirement? Is this something that we'll send out to all the banks in the area or all the insurance companies or?
Usually when we find out that the properties in, a list pending has been filed or there's violations at the property, we will mail out a notice of violation. Attach that notice of violation, we could attach this application to the lender so they can, they'll be aware that they're required to fill this out.
Okay. And then going back to Ms. Donahue's question, what level of penalty will be involved? I mean, is it 50 bucks a day, 100? How's that, it'd be up to code?
It varies.
Having never sat on code enforcement, is there, is there a format that they use or is there a structure, just what they feel is, is appropriate?
Right.
Okay. The, picking back enough of that, will those, how, how will those liens be nailed down so that we can ultimately collect on them? I mean, some, some, and I, and I guess it's a kind of fine line, is it, is it, is it extinguishable by what?
That is a question. I have not really discussed what the other, what the counties and the other cities are doing with this. When there's a list pending is already filed, it's difficult to, we record liens, but the legitimacy of those recorded liens is questionable. One of the, what isn't in our ordinance, but West Palm Beach has, is a section that states for what it's worth, since they just put it in and created it themselves, but they stated that their lien is of the same priority as an ad valorem tax lien. So, whether their simple declaration of it being so makes it so, that, that I'm not so sure about. But they have at least put that in there to make a firm statement that this is the way they intend it to be, and it would be collected then. It's filed with the tax collector, and the tax collector is expected to collect the lien along with the taxes.
Just so it's not a paper tiger that's, you know.
That's, that's something that I was wanting to talk to them a little bit more about to see how far they've gone with collecting these. I have gotten information that there's been 80% compliance, and, and when you, and I was told that once they have somebody who's now registered, they're, they're, that the, just the maintenance issues have gone down because simply we've got somebody to contact. So, we don't have the code issues even existing anymore once the registrations happen. But they said they've had at least 80% compliance with banks registering. Interestingly enough, they said that it's the mortgage services who are doing most of the registrations and not the banks themselves, and that the mortgage services get paid back by the bank. However, they said that late fees do not get paid back by the bank, and because they don't, that the mortgage services are more likely to jump on this and get into compliance because they don't want to suffer any late fees. We don't have any late fees written into this. So, it was just a suggestion that we might want to consider adding a late fee clause.
Last question, I promise. Are we going to have to increase city staff in order to accommodate and service this project?
No, I, I don't believe so. No.
Okay.
Not at this time. I mean, we're handling, the last squatter that we had case was on Lybeau, and that was probably two, three months ago.
Well, if you got 150, I'm sorry, 150 properties, it's, somebody's got to keep tabs on all of that. And I, you know, and, and if that's what it takes, then that's what it takes.
Yep.
I'm just, you know, just, just a general question as far as that. Otherwise, I like it. I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Sometimes a foreclosure can take up to four years, so.
Councilwoman Donahue.
I, I just want to say thank you because this is a proactive measure that actually is not punitive in nature.
Right.
It's protective in that it will protect our, our citizens from having these in their neighborhood.
Right.
You know, when you, I loved hearing that there were 80% compliance and that all of a sudden, they were maintaining the properties. So, the Rotary Club will have to look for something else to do. But, but I really applaud the, the city, everybody who's been involved in this because this, this is what it takes to keep our neighborhoods safe.
Yes.
And I think as far as keeping track of it, once it's in a database, utilities knows, they're aware, everyone is aware. It's public knowledge, and I, and I think that will go a long way to keeping our neighborhoods clean and safe. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilman Ross.
Couple of questions, Mr. Shoshawn. I see that you did some, we got this at 2:00 this afternoon, so I read this on my phone until, prior to getting here. Section 8170, the definitions section, you tweaked the language in the definition of abandoned real property. One of my concerns had been why we were excluding any abandoned properties except foreclosures. If somebody died or somebody was an absentee owner and they just abandoned this investment property, they weren't covered. Or they, is this language change is unclear to me whether those properties would be covered under this now or not?
I, I don't think they're, they're not necessarily considered abandoned, but they would be considered vacant properties. And since it's, see, it's covering both abandoned real property and vacant property, it would fall under that if somebody died and...
So, they would be required to follow the registration process just as if it were foreclosure?
If there was, if there were somebody to be responsible. I mean, if somebody dies and a place just sits vacant, then it would be whoever the owner is. Eventually, not always, but eventually it gets probated and somebody becomes the owner or the caretaker of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? I would ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Stevenson.
Madam Mayor, just to answer a couple of questions here that I think are outstanding here. Mr. Schisler, we, at this point, we don't anticipate needing more personnel to do this. Again, the foreclosure, the foreclosure rate has dropped considerably from when this really was a problem a couple of years ago. The, the notion of a death in the family or something going to probate, Mr. Ross, is not really something that we've experienced a problem with. Certainly with foreclosed property, we do, because when we get into the situation, we have the owner saying, I'm not responsible. I gave the keys back, and the mortgage company is saying, we don't have ownership yet. They certainly, the mortgage company certainly has a interest still in the property, and I can't imagine that they wouldn't jump on board with this for us to help them keep this, to keep the property from going into disrepair. So, I do think that it's a good ordinance. But just to answer those two couple of questions, just if I can clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Correct.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 8 Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances by enacting a new Article 7 entitled Abandoned Real Properties, Sections 8-169... entitled Abandoned Real Properties, Sections 8-169 through Section 8-177, establishing an abandoned real property registration system within the incorporated areas of Temple Terrace, providing for findings, purpose and intent, providing for definitions, providing for registration of abandoned properties, providing maintenance requirements, providing for security requirements, providing for inspections, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for a trespass affidavit, providing for exemptions, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with providing for severability and providing ineffective date.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading? If approved, the ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on March 19, 2019.
Move to approve the ordinance on first reading.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the nay sign. Thank you, motion carries. Is there any carryover council business from our previous meeting? Seeing none, we will move to new business in a discussion regarding the city's 4th of July fireworks and parade. City Manager Stevenson will review the options for council consideration and discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At our. At our, at our last meeting, we had proposed about three different options to, to address our 4th of July parade and, and our fireworks display, that have somewhat in the past been problematic with some weather. And also with the ability of a lot of our employees and our, and our staff to attend because of the sequencing of the 4th of July, and, and basically them having to work the next day, thus not allowing them to be participant in some of these activities. That has been traditionally the problem that, that I have heard from our staff. I came up with three different options to, to present to council for some discussion. It was asked that we put it on the agenda this, this, this meeting, so the council can give us some direction, and we can move forward with getting this thing scheduled. So with that, I'll just open it up to council for some discussion on, giving us some direction on where, where council would like us to go.
Thank you. Mr. Stevenson, and I was quick on the draw, Councilman Ross? Counsel.
Do you have audience? Do you have anyone in the audience who wants to?
Well, I'll do some council discussion. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Mayor Mel, and city council members. I'm Miranda Hilton, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the chamber, along with our Board Chair-elect Linda Hester, as well as chamber staff member Skylar White. We, we know that there's different dates being considered for 4th of July, and we just wanted to point out a couple of things that the chamber members have expressed to us. First and foremost, 45 years. This is a tradition that is 45 years old, 45 years old, that we are taking away from the community. I have spoke to different board members. I had one board member tell me that last year, with the complications of 4th of July, that as he went around talking family to family, letting them know that fireworks were going to be canceled, there were crying children. So that breaks my heart, being a community server, joining the chamber staff, very new. This is my fourth, first 4th of July. However, I'm committed to do whatever I can to make it a success. Whether it's working long hours up until the 4th of July, or that day. I'm all about employee morale, and I think it's very important that we do, you know, encourage employee morale. However, for the community and the tradition of 4th of July, taking that away from the community, I think would be really, really terrible for the community. Not only does the Temple Terrace community look forward to 4th of July, me being new to the community, Tampa Bay, the, the community at large looks forward to it. There aren't very many community 4th of July celebrations, and Temple Terrace is very well-known. My husband was born and raised here, and he looks forward to it every year. Point number three, or highlight number three for us, is the chamber has partnered, or has an agreement with the city to be the event planner, and we have spent countless hours, a lot of time planning for this, as well as secured vendors. We have four months to the date, and it takes a lot longer to plan this type of an event, you know, for, for the large, this large of an event for the community. So four months' time, that's right around the corner, and we've got a lot already done. So we just wanted to make our points known, or our highlights known to city council and to you, Mayor Mel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment to council on this issue? Council questions? Councilman Chambers.
Not really questions. Since our last meeting, I've talked to well over 50 people, citizens, that have enjoyed 4th of July for a lot of years. And except for one, all of those were in favor of option one, keeping the fireworks on the 4th. So it's very, very clear that our citizens, at least the ones I spoke to, want to keep the fireworks on the 4th.
Thank you, Councilman Chambers. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I want to say to the city manager, you made a tough call last year with canceling at the last minute. I've had to make similar calls like that, and hindsight, everybody's got 2020 vision, and very few people have to make those kinds of decisions. And, and that decision was made in the interest of public safety. Not only do I agree with the decision, but I wouldn't presume to even second guess your decision in that situation. So I, I don't want anybody to question that decision. You made a good call, you made it for the right reasons, difficult call. In terms of city employee, I, I have not talked to city employees, not because I don't know them, because I thought it would be inappropriate for me to go around to city manager and talk to the employees about this. So I didn't do that. So I'm speculating to some extent, but having been in public service and had to give up these days, and if you work in Temple Terrace, it's the 4th of July, if you work at USF, it's homecoming. If you work in Tampa or HCSO, it's Gasparilla. And so there's always, whatever community you work in, there's that day in that community, or that weekend. That's, you know, Dunedin's got the Highland Games, it's always something going on. My concern is, in terms of the employees, I, I understand completely, I've walked in that life for 32 years, I get it. And that's a long miserable day. It starts early, it's hot, I, I get that, you don't get home. However, and, and again, I'm speculating to some extent, but I've, if, you would still have to work the 4th of July parade. So you would still, those people that would normally be on holiday that have to work, would still have to work. You would just be able to cut out after the parade, so I'm guessing that's somewhere between 12:00, 1:00, 2:00, depending on your role. And in exchange for that, you're going to give up your three-day Labor Day weekend. Because now you're going to have to work Saturday night, right? And come in Saturday afternoon, or Saturday morning, to get things ready, depending on your role, and you're not going to get out of there. So the three-day weekend that you might have spent at the beach, or Disney, or wherever, we've just taken that away from you, so that you get three or four hours on the 4th of July to have a barbecue with your family. Now, you ask 300 employees, you'll get 300 different views on which is more important. But there's going to be a good number of people that that's not a good trade. I'd rather knock it all out on the 4th of July and get my three-day weekend. So in terms of benefiting employees, I'm not sure that this is a slam dunk for the employees, as, as much as it sounds. I haven't talked to people in the community, I haven't talked to 50 of them, but I've talked to a number of them, and I haven't had anybody who wants to move this either. And I personally, I got to tell you, and those watching, those, those people in the community, I, I'm willing to change this to whatever. I mean, if people were jumping up and down and said, oh, that's a great idea, let's do it Labor Day, we'll have a couple of big events, instead of just one. I, I'm not wedded to the 4th of July, or Labor Day, or doing it on Memorial, I don't care. Well, I care a little bit, but I mean, if the majority of people from the city came in here and said, that's a great idea, let's do this on another day, that's great, let's do Veterans Day, I don't care. You know, this is for the people of the city to, but I don't hear anybody wanting to change this. And if they are, they haven't talked to me, maybe I'm just not hearing them. So I've said enough, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Donahue.
Well, first of all, I want everybody to remember the sense of pride that we saw in the parade, at least last year, when the, when the employees had that gorgeous float that they had built and put together. And I didn't see anybody at that parade feeling like they were being put upon. So I, I kind of hate being in the position of saying to the employees, yeah, I want you to work hard, and I want you to work all day, okay? So I, I, I think we're shortchanging our employees by acting as if they're really feeling overburdened by this. I have a couple of questions, though. I really am concerned about us not having a contract. When I was the one involved with the fireworks, we had to sign that contract the minute our budget was solidified, so that we could get fireworks. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that we didn't sign one, and then here it is, March. And my other major concern is that if we're going to change this, and even entertain changing it, we need to take into consideration all the work that it takes, as Miranda made note from the chamber. It takes a long time, and we already, if I understand correctly, you already have a title sponsor, you have entertainment, you have a lot of things that you have signed contracts for. So that puts a major partner of ours in a position that they have to go back now and renegotiate. So I also want to make sure that, is it truly an option that if it rains on the 4th of July, the company says, we'll come back another time? I thought last year, the problem was that a majority of the issue was their performance, and not simply rain. I don't know that there are any rain dates, and maybe the contracts have changed from when I was signing them, but I, I, I wasn't sure about that. That all really is not so much of an issue, as I have talked to people, just like Mr. Chambers. And I talked to them in group settings, I sent out an email, and every person said, why would you change this? This is our tradition, and we have a lot of people who come here because they know they can come to Temple Terrace, watch the parade, go swimming at the rec center, do things around in the neighborhood, and then stay in Temple Terrace. And maybe then, they don't come to Temple Terrace normally. So if we were trying to show people what an amazing, beautiful canopy of trees and city we are, this is a good day for it, okay? So I, I definitely, I understand where you were going with the cost. I, I am concerned, and I absolutely agree on the Labor Day. I wasn't even sure if I was going to be here last year, because we normally make plans to go to the beach as well. So I, I think there will be a weekend when the 4th falls, in a, I know, when we have the 4th of July on Sunday, we move it to Monday. So, you know, there's, I, I just think we should keep it like it is. And again, every person I asked, and quite a few of them were like, why are you even considering this? This is.
Councilwoman Donahue, would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I would, I would like to make a motion that we have the 4th of July fireworks be held on the evening of the 4th of July. Thank you.
And parade on the 4th.
And the parade, of course.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Councilman Ross.
Madam Mayor, just a parliamentary question for you, really, is I don't, I don't think we need a motion not to take action, do we?
Well, I, we are, we're looking for direction, and I think it's important, because of the nature of this, making a decision, that we do want to take action, that it can be documented, that council did entertain three options, and council selected an option, and voted accordingly, and all of our votes get registered. So I think it's more than just a consensus at this point, that we'd like to have a vote. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you. At this point, city managers report.
New business we're still on, right?
New business. Council reports, apologies.
Okay. I just was hoping to get this in before the fireworks discussion, but I just want to applaud the city manager and public works, and the staff in public works for, I don't know if the public is, appreciates the significance of all of these projects that keep coming before us. These, they're not, they don't have a lot of curb appeal, you don't get to drive by like the rec center and see, you know, things that are visible. They're underground, they're pumping water, they're pumping wastewater. They're not real sexy projects, I get it. But, but these are things, folks, for those of you watching, that have been delayed and deferred maintenance for sometimes decades, that things needed to be done. And pipes have collapsed, and things, infrastructure is failing and aging, and, and should have been replaced sometimes 10, 15, 20 years ago. And so, like I said, I want to applaud, we put a lot of emphasis on redevelopment, and rightfully so, in the rec center, in the boardwalk, in the parks, and rightfully so. But these projects are, in some ways, even more important. If you can't get rid of wastewater or sewage, you don't care what the park looks like. And so, again, Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Tinch, thank you for your efforts. You guys are working wonders over there, I don't know how you're keeping up with all of it, but thank you.
Is there any other new business?
It's not really new business, Madam Mayor, but it's the board reports that we were, we agreed to last meeting to institute. So is this the appropriate time? Okay, I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on a couple of hard issues. Number one, the, the deal with Temple Terrace. The, the new CEO is on board, what, has been hired, which, which we knew. His contract's been approved, and he will take all, he'll, he will assume his position towards the end of March. And I've spoken with him, he's coming out here in the beginning of April for a tour. We're going to get to take him to where we need, need some changes made, and he's going to come address council. But it won't be until probably the second or third week of April, and I'll coordinate with the city manager. And another important project, issue that's been, that's been going on down there, is an F.DOT heart arterial study that, for about $2.5 million, that the, the board had been entertaining and kicking around for quite a while. But it only covered Florida, Nebraska, and Fowler to USF, and stopped. So was able to, in the, in the last couple of meetings, in the finance and audit meeting, and then again on yesterday morning, in fact, they tabled the whole, whole motion because scope issues, it's got to come to Tampa, it's got to come to Temple Terrace. You know, we have too many cars driving in and out of Temple Terrace, on Fowler Avenue, for the scope of the project not to go all the way to, to I-75. That, and a couple of procedural issues, because there's some concurrent studies going on right now with other arterial projects, and, and intermodal projects and so forth. And I don't know that anybody knows which, how many they got going. And they're starting to step all over each other. So they're, they're going to do a review, and I, I know I'm making it somewhat simplistic, but they're going to wait till the new CEO's on board, bring it up to him, and they say, okay, let's let the dust settle, let's see what's, let's, let's make sure the scope covers everybody that we needed to cover. Because, you know, everything's changing, with the new sales tax, whenever that gets, whenever that gets resolved, will make things a lot easier. Second is school support committee. As everybody knows, we've had a couple of meetings in town on the 12th, and then again on the 20th at Greco, to discuss the future, what Greco's going to look like, and how the district is going to accommodate and improve the, the, the standing for the school. And everybody's aware that they've expanded the boundaries to cover all of Temple Terrace and the, the immediate surrounding areas, which is very, very good. Still has not been approved by the, the school boards yet. It, as I was saying, it was as of yet, but did it go, I haven't heard.
No, I, I apologize. I spoke with Superintendent Aiken yesterday, and he asked if we would be joining them this evening, and I shared that we share meeting dates. But he had briefed each of the school board members, and did not foresee any challenge happening, and the vote was going to happen this evening, and he said he would, he would text or leave, leave a message.
Is that a two-step process, or is it just one, is that, is that going to take two readings, or is that going to be just one? So it'll be two.
Since it's a change of boundaries, I'm assuming it would be two.
So anyway, so that's going on. The school support committee did also talk quite extensively with, with the district when they were there last week about the changes that were going to be made. People expressed some disappointment that it was just rah rah, this is what we got, but only covers 20% of the student population. So, you know, while that's great, and it's good, what are we going to, I'm not 20%, it's almost, it's almost 33%. What are we going to do about the other two-thirds? Because it's STEM in the caps, it doesn't cover all the students. And, and the district assured us that they, they were working on programs, and they were working on metrics, and they were working on staff development to help alleviate. working on metrics and they were working on staff development to help alleviate and bring up the, the, the grade school-wide. Okay? Because you're not going to, you're not going to, not everybody's going to be IB, not everybody's going to be STEM, not everybody's going to be pre-caps. There's going to be some potential. Make sure that the whole school's brought up. And the fact that they need to have better communication so that more people know about what's going on and bringing that forward. They did come back that the pre-caps will be offered to Greco in time and that the school choice application window, the next one is towards the end of this month so that more, more people will, will have opportunity to, to participate in that. And that's, audit committee is, the audit's still in process, so we're still, that'll be a later date, but that's our groups.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler.
I'd like to make a report, but may I ask Councilman a question about Greco?
Yeah.
It was my understanding that the IB is an approach, meaning that the entire school body, they don't have to apply to be an IB. IB is an approach for every student.
This is true, but it's, it's a process that, that we're talking next year. The, the IB, the IB application will start in October of this year coming up. So, it's going to take time for everything to transition in so that the impact from the IB program is not going to happen like that.
Correct.
Can't do it like that. It's going to, and what, and the question to the district was, "Okay, that's great. That's fine. But how are we going to take it from a D to a C to a B?" That's a gradual process. What steps are in place? What's being done to accommodate that? And this is what they're, they're trying to, to express and need to communicate that. You know, we, all the programs are great, but if we don't tell the parents what the kids, what the students are going to be, their opportunities are going to be, it's, it doesn't do any good. So, that's...
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Councilwoman Donahue.
Right. So, I was recently appointed to the Suncoast League of Cities and I have not been able to clear my calendar for the January and February meetings, but I've been active in my role with the Florida League of Cities advocacy team responding to requests for letters to both committees, active committees, and now that the legislation is in session to legislators. I also taught a class on home rule and how cities work. And I want to tell you that I know it's written for children, but we should, you should all go look at it. Okay? It was well-done. I, I taught that class for, to Scout Pack 188 at the Presbyterian Church and the video was as entertaining for the parents as it was for the children. So, and there was a lively discussion afterwards. And since they then found out that it was all about their cities, they wanted to know what they could do to help, which I was like, "Okay, let's brainstorm." I've been involved, I have reached out to the Hillsborough County Affordable Housing Advisory Board and I'm waiting approval by the Board of County Commissions, Commissioners before I can actually begin attending those meetings. I've been representing the city at the Tampa Innovation Partnership, at their monthly advisory meetings and at the advisory leadership luncheon, which was hosted by the VA. By the way, Joe Battle, their CEO, is a resident of Temple Terrace and he was very proud to announce that to the group. And also be volunteering at the state of Uptown, the name of the new, of the mall, on March 28. I represented the city at the Transportation Day at USF and they closed Alumni Boulevard. Is it Boulevard or Avenue? And it was a little eerie sitting in the middle of that street, which is normally very busy. But it was in conjunction with F.DOT, MPO, and Cutter and we painted the bike lanes green, which seems to be Vision Zero's, their, their claim to fame. And last but not least, I poured coffee and served donuts on behalf of the Rotary Club of Temple Terrace at the Bike with the Mayor on March 1st. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to come before council? City Manager Stevenson for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know that I have anything else to share with council this evening. Thank you.
And I would just, and it happens every meeting, but just very briefly before we close this evening, from Mr. Carraza to Mr. Tinch to Ms. College to Mr. Barone to Ms. Shishon and to our city manager, thank you for how you present materials to us and how you share the backup information and history that has led to the decision point for us. Last week, I, I sat in on a, on a session in another jurisdiction and there were so many questions that came from the dais because the background information wasn't presented in the professional manner with which you do it. So, I want to thank our directors, want to thank our city manager. And if there is no further business to come before council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.